Well, good evening. It is seven o'clock and we will call our meeting to order. First on the agenda, we have our roll call. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam President, all board members are here.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I ask that following the pledge, would you please stay standing for a moment of silence? This past weekend Carmel Clay Schools lost a valued member of the Greyhound family, Ms. Eugenia Corbin. She was a professional educator in the English Department at Carmel High School and was really an inspiration to thousands of students and staff. Her memory will live on in Carmel, in our Carmel community and her family's in our thoughts. So with that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we move on, I wanted to share a few words. Recently, the Board has received feedback from members of our Carmel community about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would like to take a moment to address these concerns with facts. For those not at the April 26th School Board Meeting and missed comments made by Dr. Beresford, I would like to reiterate that Carmel Clay Schools does not teach critical race theory or the 1619 Project, nor are either of these topics found in Carmel Clay School curriculum or the Indiana State Standards. In our Carmel Clay Schools, we teach character counts and kindness matters. In alignment with the Carmel Clay School Guiding Principles, which you will see posted here and posted at the entry of every one of our schools, all CCS students must have a safe, non-threatening learning environment to grow and feel valued and respected. Along with our professional educators, we have several Carmel Clay Schools administrators, including the Student Services Director, our Mental Health Coordinator, and DEI Officer, who work with our staff to build a positive environment to address the students' academic, social, emotional, and physical needs. We encourage everyone to visit the DEI page now available on our website. You will find the structure of our DEI position along with roles and responsibilities. You will also find some important definitions, which I want to explain in the context of our work within Carmel Clay Schools. When we talk diversity, we mean work. Work to embrace a school environment where students and staff value differences and have empathy for one another. When we talk equity, we mean work to ensure individual students have the tools they need to be successful. When we talk inclusion, that is also work. Work to ensure everyone who comes to Carmel Schools feels included, valued, and respected. Let me give you some examples of Carmel Clay Schools' diversity, equity, and inclusion work at its finest. On Friday evening, I had the pleasure to attend the first and only live Carmel High School Choir Concert of the Year. What I witnessed was an excellent example of the diversity we value. Students of different racial backgrounds, intellectual and physical abilities, different religions and cultural heritages, different genders, all on one stage, creating beautiful harmonies. At CHS, the choir department has ten separate ensembles for students to work together to showcase their individual talents. When COVID forced virtual classrooms, CCS provided Chromebooks to every student who needed a computer for school. That was thousands of Chromebooks. Several families with multiple students did not have a device for their children. What we did with CCS, we ensured equity. Equity is ensuring all students have the tools necessary to be successful. CCS also worked with families without internet service to ensure they could learn virtually like their peers. This is equity, removing obstructions so students have the tools to succeed. Our Carmel Clay students celebrate inclusion, not only in the classroom, but on the field. Hundreds of students participate in a national program through Special Olympics. It's called Champions Together. You might have heard about it. It was also on the front page of the sports section. Champions Together, this program allows Special Olympic athletes to compete alongside their typical peers in bocce ball, basketball, volleyball, flag football, track and field. In fact, our Carmel Champions Together bocce ball team has won the Indiana State Bocce Ball Championship this past year, and we are thrilled for them. This is inclusion at its best. I also want to share a portion of this statement regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion by the Mayor's Advisory Council on Human Relations. The full letter is available on our CCS DEI website and will be attached to the Board Recap. What the Council has shared is, "The Commission applauds and supports the efforts of Carmel Clay Schools to provide robust diversity, equity, and inclusion programs that help every student understand and appreciate the history and culture of ethnic groups other than their own and show up each day without fear of being their true selves." Diversity includes both visible and invisible characteristics that make us unique individuals. Equity is about providing every student with an optimal learning environment. Inclusion requires creating an atmosphere that empowers people to fully participate in a community where they are respected and supportive, in the classroom and beyond. I stand in saying that Carmel Clay Schools and our School Board will continue to make decisions that align with these Carmel Clay School Guiding Principles and focus on student Moving along, we have presentations. And for our first presentation, we turn to Dr. O'Stryke.
Good evening, Presidents Spannenberg, Dr. Beresford, and members of the Board. I'm very excited to be here tonight to share with you our Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year recipients. Nominations for our Teacher of the Year in Carmel are submitted by students, parents, community members, and staff, and a selection committee thoroughly reviews nominees before selecting semifinalists at each school, and then ultimately one CCS Teacher of the Year. This award is endowed through the Carmel Education Foundation and was created in memory of Mr. Backer, an advocate and supporter of Carmel Clay Schools who served on the Board of Trustees from 1994 to 98, and also from 2006 until March of 2009, when he passed away. At this time, we will share a video created to recognize all of our CCS Teacher of the Year semifinalists.
Everything okay?
Everything's great.
Kids, I am the Superintendent of Carmel Clay Schools. Mrs. Johnson is the Charing Tree Teacher of the Year. You are our Teacher of the Year. Mr. Gutz is the Teacher of the Year. So congratulations. The Rocket Town Smoky Road Teacher of the Year. Teacher of the Year for Carmel Elementary School. You are the Teacher of the Year. I'm here to tell you that you are one of Carmel High School's Teachers of the Year.
Yeah.
Good morning Prairie Trace family. Please pardon the interruptions.
We have a big announcement. Mrs. Courtney Davis is the Prairie Trace Teacher of the Year.
Our own Mr. Lamy is being recognized as the Town Meadow Elementary School Teacher of the Year.
And it is Mrs. Dyke.
And with that, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce to all of you our 2021 Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year from Carmel Middle School Technology Education Teacher and Coordinator, Mrs. Leslie Karpiaak. So stay here, stay here. I'd like to share a few words from Mrs. Karpiaak's principal, Mrs. Pittman, who's here with us this evening. Thank you very much. Mrs. Pittman states that Mrs. Karpiaak always puts her students first. She is a fantastic teacher who inspires not only her students, but her colleagues across the district. Her teaching skills are superb. However, it's her ability to build positive relationships with everyone in the building that makes her a phenomenal asset to our community. Leslie, all of Leslie's nominations echoed everything Mrs. Pittman shared with us about Mrs. Karpiaak. And so, without further ado, we have one more video to share with you this evening, and we are going to play that right now. One for the district. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beresford.
Thank you for explaining that to us.
You bet.
And finally, Leslie, you are the one. You are the Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year.
Hey, Mrs. Karpiaak, congratulations. You are Teacher of the Year. We are so proud of you, and it's so well deserved. And I wish I had a good adage here for you, but I'll just make it up. Good job.
Hi, Leslie. We are so excited for you to receive this big honor of being Teacher of the Year.
And we are so proud of your accomplishment.
Hey, Leslie, congratulations. We're awful proud of you. I appreciate everything you do for the kids we serve and the families that we serve, and we're just lucky to have you. So congratulations, 2020, 2021 CCS Teacher of the Year. It's you.
I know you won Teacher of the Year because you're the best teacher ever, and you are the cat, the cool, awesome teacher of the entire school.
Hello, Leslie. Very excited for you. I just want you to know, you are the only Calgary Flames fan that I would ever congratulate. Way to go.
Hi, Leslie. We love you. You will always be an attendance queen. Hey, Leslie, I love watching you every day and how you interact with students. You are the best.
Hey, Leslie, we hope you remember the little guys that you left behind when you went out and became such an amazing superstar, but we are so proud of you and all of the work that you do every day for teachers and students of Carmel Clay Schools. You absolutely deserve this award. You are a model of excellence. Congratulations.
We love you, Mrs. Karpiaak.
Congratulations, Ms. Karpiaak. I know you won because you're so caring and loving to all your students. You care so much about everybody in your class, and you make sure everybody's involved with everything you do. We love you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Leslie. You are the best partner of the avid family to work with. You always help us when we need help, and you're so inspiring for your students, and you take such amazing good care of them. You are the most deserving recipient for this award. You make everyone feel special. That's your gift. So lucky to work with you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Leslie.
Congratulations, Leslie. So well deserved. We are so proud of you. One, two, three.
Congratulations, Mrs. Karpiaak. I know you won because you always have such a good relationship with your students, and you treat them as your own kids, and you're always by their side when they need you.
Leslie, it has been so awesome to work across the hall from you the past couple of years. I love the music, the dancing, the enthusiasm you have for your kids, and just how much care you give them while they're here at CAM and afterwards. You're really an inspiration.
Hi, Leslie. It's such a blessing to be able to work with you. You are an amazing teacher, an amazing staff member, and we are so lucky to have you here at Carmel Middle School. The relationships you build with your students and the staff is just amazing. Congratulations. So well served.
Congratulations, Leslie. Totally deserve this award. So proud of you and so glad that you're part of the Carmel Middle family. You rock.
Hey, Leslie, congratulations on Teacher of the Year. There is no one more deserving. Everything that you do for our teachers and for our students and our families, we appreciate you. We got lots of hearts for you.
Great.
And so we are going to bring our 2021 Teacher of the Year up to the podium to say a few words, but before we do that, we showered her with gifts at Carmel Middle School when Dr. Beresford and the team went to recognize her. But the School Board also wanted to recognize you with the certificate, and then we have a framed that kind of looks like a graduation diploma there, but we also have a framed certificate for you on behalf of the district, and we are so incredibly proud of you. And at this time, we're going to go ahead, bring you up, and then we'll bring Emily over for some pictures. And without further ado, Leslie Karpiaak.
I just want to say thank you and that it's an honor to be the Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. I knew in kindergarten that I wanted to be a teacher when I grew up, and here I am, quite literally living the dream. I think I've been telling people for years that I'm in my dream job. I get to teach something that I'm passionate about to the absolute most amazing age group of students. Middle schoolers are the best, and I love my students and my building and my district with my whole heart. So thank you. This means the world to me, and I'm overwhelmed with gratitude.
Congratulations, Leslie. And if you want to take a moment and introduce your family, Leslie, if you'd like to introduce your family, we would love to know who is here with you.
So with me tonight are my parents, Herman and Brenda, and my husband Lucas, and our two beautiful children, Liam and Lila.
Congratulations. You represent what is good and great about our professional educators in our school system, and we appreciate all you do each and every day. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Carmel High School Boys Basketball State Champions. Into that, we turn to Mr. Inskeep.
Thank you, Mrs. Spannenberg and Dr. Beresford, for this opportunity to honor a state championship team in boys' basketball. And for me to talk about growing up here in Indiana and talk about winning a high school state basketball title, and basketball is something that I think a lot of kids dream about, and this group was fortunate to do it two years ago, and unfortunately, last year had their tournament run shortened by the pandemic, hitting right in the middle of the tournament. So as they set out with their goals this year, it was a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication and to keep focused on the end of the season throughout every day that they were working out and going through their practices. So a lot of fun to be around this team. They are a scholar-athlete team. They've represented our community extremely well. The teamwork that they show, the hard work, it is truly a team effort and is led by our coaching staff and head coach, Ryan Osborne. At the conclusion of this year's state championship game, senior Connor Joya was honored as the State Mental Attitude Award winner, and Connor is a National Merit finalist and a 4.4 GPA, and is also a member of the baseball team. So we're very proud of Connor as well. One of the great things, I shouldn't say great, but one of the good things that has come out of our last 14 months or so is the opportunity to utilize video to kind of bring the personalities of some of our student athletes to the board meetings. And so with that, Emily Bowers put together a terrific video with all the team members and head coach, Ryan Osborne.
Hello, this is Ryan Osborne, head coach of your Carmel Greyhounds. I couldn't be more proud of our team this season. Bringing home a four A basketball state championship in the state of Indiana is quite the accomplishment. But even more than that, I'm proud of our players, how they carry themselves, and how they represent our school, our program, and our community. Thank you to all of our players, all of our families and fans. Thank you to especially our seniors, who have shown great leadership throughout all four years of their career.
Hi, my name is Spencer Wyatt. I'm a 10th grader. Something I enjoyed about this year's season was winning state championship with my teammates, and something I look forward to next year is, you know, win another ring with my teammates. Have fun.
Pete Suter here. I'm a junior at Carmel. One thing I enjoyed about this season the most was winning the state championship and being with my friends every single day. And then next year's expectations are probably a repeat, winning the state championship at Bankers Life.
My name is Brian Wannell, and I was a senior this year at Carmel High School. And my favorite part of this year was just being able to see my friends, teammates, and compete against them every day. And starting next year, I'll be continuing to play basketball at Purdue University.
My name is Sam Warren. I'm a sophomore. The thing I probably most enjoyed about the season was yoga sessions with the whole team, and then my expectations for next year are make it back to state.
Hi, my name's Joshua, and I'm a junior. And my favorite part about our team was definitely that we all loved being around each other, so we made a lot of great memories on and off the court. I'm really excited about hopefully not having to deal with COVID next year so we can fill up the stadiums and bring that energy back.
My name is Bryce Berry. I'm a senior. And what I enjoyed most this year was hanging out with my teammates, not only on the court but off the court, and winning a state championship. I plan to attend Ball State University next year, studying business and minoring in communications.
Hi, I'm Burke Weldy. I'm a junior. My favorite thing about last season was just being with the guys every day and getting to know them better. And I'm looking forward to next season, hopefully winning a lot more games and making another good run in the tournament.
I'm Connor Joya, and I'm a senior. And what I enjoyed most about playing on the basketball team this year was getting able to make a state run after getting cut short last year. I'll be attending the Kelly School Business at IU in the fall.
Hi, my name is Will Leary, and I was a senior on the Carmel basketball team this year. I'd say the most special thing about this team was how much everyone loved each other. I wish these boys the best of luck next year and go Hounds.
My name is Joshuaak. I'm a junior this year. I'll be a senior next year. My favorite part of the season obviously was winning state. One thing I'm looking for next year is just playing with new people, playing with some of my senior friends again that I haven't played with in a while. And some expectations that I have is obviously winning our sectional, winning the MEC, and going back to state.
I'm Jared Bonds. I'm a sophomore. My favorite part of the season was the championship run and going down the and going to the new gyms and stuff, really fun. Next year, looking forward to being competitive and having another good championship run.
My name's Charlie Williams, I'm a junior at Carmel High School. And this season, I probably enjoyed just hanging out with the guys the most and just being around the team. Next year, I'm looking forward to being a leader as a senior on the team.
Hi, I'm Nick Frishe, senior. And what I enjoyed most about the season was just spending time with the guys and growing as a team, being able to fight through the highs and lows and ultimately winning state. Next year, I plan to attend IU and study informatics at the Letty School of Informatics.
I think it goes without saying, but you know, going through a whole season with all of the protocols that this group went through, the sacrifice that they made from being away from friends and doing a lot of things, not being able to do a lot of things they normally do, I think speaks volumes about how much this meant to them. And as they started that run, being able to be back in front of gyms even though they weren't fully, full capacity, just having a lot more noise in the gym during that regional and semi-state was really something special. So once again, thank you for having us.
Well, congratulations to our state basketball winners. And next, we turn to academic achievement. And for that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Well, good evening. It is my pleasure this evening to honor our young artists. And you can see their fine work right behind us in the boardroom. Their work will be up in our boardroom for the next six months for all of us to enjoy. And we are just so impressed with the talent of our students. First, I'd like to introduce Finn Rimmel. She is a kindergarten student at Carmel Elementary. We have Lilyanna Shirley, a fifth grade student at Cherry Tree. Erin Doria, a kindergarten student at College Wood. Marcos Gonzalez Barata is a fifth grade student at Forestale. Ryan Meek, she is a fifth grade student at Mohawk Trails. Mason Wen is a first grade student at Orchard Park. Dahlia Gage is a fourth grade student at Prairie Trace. Kira Feng is a third grade student at Smokey Row. Una Wampler is a fourth grade student at Town Meadow. Ellie McRury is a kindergarten student at West Clay. Noah Davini is a second grade student at Woodbrook. Alexis Ayalo is an eighth grade student at Carmel Middle School. Grace Boyer is an eighth grade student at Clay Middle School. Alexis Midler is a seventh grade student at Creekside Middle School. And Abby Albright is a 10th grade student at Carmel High School. And as I said, we're so impressed with their talent, and it could not be done without the great leadership of their art teachers each and every day in the classroom. And we're just very excited that we have a wonderful group of art teachers that work day in, day in and day out with all of our students in Carmel Clay Schools to help really build their talent throughout. And so we're very excited about our young artists for the next six months in our boardroom.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. And for the families and the students with their pictures, do they have the opportunity to come to ESC if they would like to have their picture taken here in the boardroom?
Yes, they could come.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, as we move along, Dr. Bearsford, both the videos, will those be available on our Carmel YouTube site?
Yes, those will be available there. And I imagine we'll be hitting those out on social media as well.
Fantastic.
I think we ought to give Emily a hand for those videos.
Thank you very much. Well, next on our agenda is public comment. And I'd like to remind everybody, pursuant to Bylaw 0167.3, I ask you to approach the podium when your name is called. Please share your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to share your thoughts. Please keep in mind that personal complaints against a student, an employee, or a school official, those are not permitted. The lights on the podium that you see there will illuminate. Green when you begin, yellow when 30 seconds remain. And then when your three minutes are complete, the red light will illuminate followed by an audible signal. At that time, I ask that you please finish your thoughts promptly. Since the school board meetings are meetings held in public for the sole purpose of conducting school board business, we will permit 30 minutes this evening as we do each and every time we have public comment. So with that, we will begin. The first person that I have on my first card is Sage Meade.
Can everyone hear me good? Awesome. In that case, I'll begin starting now. In light of some of the comments made in opposition of a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer at Carmel High School, I noticed something interesting that made me feel the need to share my experience. So hi, I'm Sage Meade, and I've been attending Carmel Clay Schools since kindergarten. Two elementary schools, one middle school. And presently, I'm a junior finishing up my year at Carmel High School. And in all that time, I have never once had a teacher that was of any racial minority. Not as a core teacher, not as a specials teacher, or an elective teacher, not even as an assistant teacher in any way. So that means that in my 12 years of attending CCS schools, I have never once had a teacher that looked like me. And so while some of those teachers have been absolutely incredible people and wonderful teachers, it means that I've never truly had someone that understood my perspective, my experiences, or my hardships as a brown female at Carmel. So when people come up and they say that we shouldn't look at one group as a whole or we should look at the content of people's character, I would like to tell them this. My group has never been looked at. We are constantly faced with barriers to our success in the forms of discrimination, microaggressions, macroaggressions, and implicit biases. And it means that we are always forced to just put on the best face and try and make as many strides as we can to be at just near par with our white students when being judged the content of our character. And that is why we need a DEI officer at Carmel High School. To guarantee that there will always be someone in the school when I walk down the halls that understands my perspective and is willing to make stand-up for me and the people like me against the ever-present inequity. So for that, I say, let us uplift and be proud of our differences. Let us make sure that everyone can feel safe and understood at Carmel High School. And let us guarantee that all the other little brown girls that will go into their classrooms next year will know that there is someone there for them. That is the reason that I support DEI at Carmel, and I hope you will all join me in such. Thank you.
Colleen, is that working?
Yeah. It's going.
Okay. Next, we have Ethan Store.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ethan. I'm also a junior at Carmel. So two weeks ago, I was here and I had the displeasure of hearing a bunch of people complain about the new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, Mrs. Roberts Leonard. And all of those people were parents though, so I wanted to, along with Sage, give students perspective. So to the school board, I think that it was made abundantly clear that Mrs. Roberts Leonard is necessary. There is indeed racism, sexism, racism, sexism, and homophobia at Carmel as someone denied. And attending even one Black Student Alliance meeting will make that clear. Many parents said that they get to teach their kids morals, not the school, which is fair enough, but let's be careful on what the implications of these morals are. If the school seeks to provide a supportive and safe environment for all students, then that would include students of color, LGBT students, and other disadvantaged groups. Therefore, one's morals should not be used against other students on account of, therefore, example, skin color or sexuality. I would hope Mrs. Roberts Leonard could not only provide for these minority students, but also provide for every other student by teaching about others. Because at the end of the day, you cannot understand a group's experience if you do not belong to that group. I think that it would be beneficial to learn and understand what it means to be someone I will not be, and vice versa. Minority students exist and deserve representation as much as non-minority students. And so, to those who feel threatened by diversity, equity, and inclusion, please grow up.
Next, on the agenda, next we have Jacoby Williams.
Good evening. Everyone hear me okay? Yes? My name is Dr. Jacoby Williams. I am the Ruth N. Hall's Professor at Indiana University in Bloomington. I come here today not representing any particular group, but as a resident who has lived here for almost 10 years, whose kids are now in middle school, who started in kindergarten. I am an expert in 20th century American history and also in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have either lectured or consulted in over 40 countries on DEI issues in the last three or four years. So I want to make sure I preface that with my comments in case it offends anyone. My purpose here is to support CCS's DEI policy initiatives and programs, and also Terry Roberts Leonard, who I have yet to meet. I'm ready and willing to wield my expertise, network backed by IU resources in which I control, which includes students, faculty, staff, databases, research, national, international enterprises, et cetera. I also am here to advocate against what I identify as old white supremacist tropes, clouded in code words such as tradition, or guilt, or patriotism, or indoctrination. Such people historically view these issues in binary terms, in black versus white. And DEI includes all groups. White women are also a marginalized group. And I save you the explanation of what DI means because I think Board President laid exactly, in clear terms, what exactly DI represents and its purpose and its mission. So I save that paragraph. As a historian, the same white supremacist issues can be found in the languages of segregationists in the 60s that opposed the Brown v. Board Education decision, that used slow integration and inclusion. Also used by those racists who opposed busing in the 60s and 70s, which was also an attempt to address DEI concerns. It's been used by anti-affirmative action supporters, who again, only sees issues in black and white dichotomies and binaries, which again, affirmative action is another attempt to address DEI concerns. And the group that's benefited the most from affirmative action, ironically, are white women, is often overlooked marginalized group. So now currently here at CCS, as an outsider looking in, I recognize these same tropes and languages appearing again. This is an easily identifiable white supremacist approach. As a parent, CCS's DEI program are a necessary addition that I believe is long overdue. DEI's purpose is to advocate, on behalf of all students who seriously address concerns of students historically on the margins, I implore this board to not succumb to outside pressure but rather invest in and evolve DEI programs, policies, initiatives. And before I leave in my 15 seconds, I want to say something about critical race theory as a professor and scholar who actually teaches it. Critical race theory is not some socialist conspiracy. It's only taught actually for those who are seeking a law degree or a PhD such as myself. It's not even taught at the undergraduate level. So the idea that it's being taught in our schools is just a lie, just to be clear about that. So I just employ the administration here to, and the superintendent, to expand those initiatives and allow me to help you and my network and others in any way, shape, or form, and I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Laura DeCarlo, DelCarlo.
Can everybody hear me okay? Well, before I read what I wrote, I have to say that sitting here, listening to your opening, watching the videos that we've put together as a community, the teacher getting honored, regardless of what's going on, all of us are so lucky to be a part of this district. And I think that my choice to move here from Arizona to raise my children was the best one I ever made. I think there are more of us who see along the same lines and want the same things for our children than there are people who aren't understanding what we're trying to offer. So with that, I will read what I wrote. "I am a Jewish parent of two incredible daughters, one of which who was gay. She came out to us at 14 after years of hinting, and then was brave enough to come out on social media. For us, it was a non-issue. We raised our kids to be true to themselves, and this changed absolutely nothing. Unfortunately for her, her peers were incredibly supportive and accepting, and at almost 16, she still has not been subjected to hate at all at high school. Perhaps it's because she's so accepting, supportive, kind, and loving towards everyone who knows her, that her sexuality does not make a difference. Sadly, that isn't the case for all the children who are struggling with their identities. And what's even sadder is that their parents may not be open to these self-realizations, so both school and home are both places that can feel unwelcoming to them. And I hope that as a community, we can all work on that. There is an entire world out there for our children, just waiting for them. They are all so beautifully different with unique backgrounds, upbringings, beliefs, history. And at that same time, they are all the same. They are all humans with hearts and minds and basic needs that deserve to be met individually so they can function as a whole. There is no other choice but to coexist side by side. Global companies and universities have a huge focus on cultural awareness and diversity, as do the same small businesses that our Carmel students are applying for summer jobs. Right here in Carmel, these programs ensure psychological safety. Research shows that both children and adults thrive in diverse environments. And when we excel at combining what we know, we create a stronger societal fabric. We also create a space where everyone feels safe bringing their unique gifts to the table. DEI is important because it encourages our students to learn about their peers and the unique communities and cultures and traditions from which they come. We must all listen to create understanding, find solutions, and meet people where they are so that we can take action to create equitable opportunities. This is going to be a marathon and not a sprint, and we must keep the momentum going." Thank you.
Next, we have Brandon Anderson.
Hello, can everyone hear me okay? Hi, I'm Brandon Anderson. I'm a sophomore at Carmel High School. I'm the president of the African History and Culture Club and a member of the BSA, the Black Student Alliance. But I'm here just representing myself and talking about my own experiences. I've gone to Carmel Clay Schools since I was in kindergarten, and in that time, I've only had one black teacher, which honestly makes me more fortunate than a lot of the other students here. But that one black teacher was so incredibly important to me. He defended me from racism from other students. He talked to me about what we were learning in our curriculum and how that could be racist and wrong. He explained to me my own role in dispelling stereotypes and myths about black people and how I need to be representing my culture well. And that is such an incredibly important thing for a black student. And that is such an incredibly important thing for a black student to hear and to be around. I got the pleasure of talking to Mrs. Roberts Leonard through the African History and Culture Club. And I can safely say, nothing that she is talking about or planning on doing is dangerous or trying to harm children. I see what she is working for as the exact thing that I wish had been more present in my schools from the beginning. I've been in classes where I've had to learn about how we need to respect the KKK because they're exercising their First Amendment right. I've been in so many classes that distort what MLK was about and refuse to teach about other black leaders throughout history. I've seen, I've, I've heard in classes how we need to talk about both sides of colonization and how it was a bad thing for some people, but a good thing for others. And this kind of twisting of education is very dangerous, not just for black kids, but for white kids. We need to make sure that everyone understands the truth.
Next, we have Ayann Abasi. And please correct me at the podium if I'm chopping it up, sorry.
Can everybody hear me all right? My name is Ayann Abasi, and I'm currently a junior at Carmel High School. So I want to start off today by asking a question. When did discrimination end? When did racism end? When did homophobia end? And the honest, terrifying, and devastating fact is, it has not. A law cannot abolish an implicit bias. We know the facts. We are aware of the countless lives due to someone's skin, lost due to someone's skin color, the countless opportunities lost due to someone's sexuality. So today, I want to focus on my experience as a person of color. Ever since I was a kid, my dream was to be on Disney Channel. And looking back, I know that sounds silly, but that was truly everything I could ever dream of. Yet the only representation I had was Ravi, a character that represented the archetype of a South Asian kid. And at seven years old, that dream began to fly away from me. At seven years old, the dreams that I should have been building were crushed. Would I be resorted to an accent? Would my heritage always be known as Indian rather than Pakistani, where I actually am from? And that's exactly why we need a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. Because as much as I would like to say those problems have ended, they have not. As much as we want to ignore it, those problems are every bit as relevant as they were five years ago. Let's take a moment to look at our own community, things that aren't just on a TV screen. I think the moment that sticks out to me most was when I was taunted and called Osama bin Laden for my religion. And not one person defended me. Sorry, give me one second. People I had called friends were comparing me to a terrorist, and instead of saying anything against it, they laughed. And that's what I want to leave you with. This is an issue that didn't occur 10 years ago. This occurred three years ago, not in a different continent or even in a different city, but in Carmel, Indiana, at Carmel High School. Racism and discrimination are prevalent problems in Carmel Clay Schools, and we have acknowledged it. The next step is to address it, and that starts right here. Thank you.
Next, we have, I believe, Anchole Argawal. Anchole, okay, thank you.
Are we seeing our addresses? No, okay, awesome, cool. All right, everyone can hear me. Hello, everyone. I'm a junior at Carmel High School, here to represent the students who are ultimately impacted and supporting DEI. My name is Anchole Argawal, but I always haven't always been happy about saying that. As recent as ninth grade, I would half-jokingly tell people that I wanted to change my name to something English because of how much I hated how society choked out my name or refrained from saying it at all. I remember every variation of people contorting their mouths to say my name and how I immediately became an "other" in their eyes. When I look back on it with the confidence I have now, I can only think of how much that hurt my mom, who had spent years choosing the name Anchole, and even modifying the spelling to make it more palatable to the American English pronunciation. Here was a cornerstone, part of my identity, given to me by my parents that I wanted to quickly dispose of, much like my thermos of Indian food at lunch, the hair that grows thicker on my body, and the faded henna on my hands, because of how alone, small, and excluded I felt. I want to say that I agree that race, gender, ethnicity, sexuality, and neurodivergence are not the most important part of people's identities. But in today's society, they do play a central role in people's day-to-day experience, long-term sense of self, and the opportunities presented to them in life. When someone walks by me, they do see that I am brown and have some perception about it. The same way I might walk past someone black and take note of their race. But I'd rather have, I'd rather have someone have an understanding of my Indian culture or how to be culturally sensitive and appropriate, which I think is why the DEI officer is important and what the DEI program bolsters. And that I don't want to hear you say that you wish you were as tan as me. Saying you don't see my color means you don't see the beauty in my differences or recognize that I may experience the world differently than you, which ultimately creates a culture of false peace and misunderstanding at the expense of marginalized groups. I'm so thankful to attend Carmel, where my experience is much easier than it would be in many other places in America. And I think that's why we all may be thinking, I've never used a slur. My child is friends with a person of color. I see black, brown, Asian, indigenous kids winning awards, playing sports, getting jobs, getting into colleges. While all of these things may be true, that is not enough to qualify that students of difference through race, gender, ethnicity, sexuality, et cetera, do not have different experience at Carmel, that a DEI program would benefit. It's impossible to say that all students have equal experiences and opportunity based on what you perceive. You would never know how we prune, edit, mold, code-switch, and filter ourselves to accommodate to society without having lived the experience. We are ultimately asking that society give back a little in return to understand why we might wear hijab, why we sweat around police officers, or why we were quiet during the discussion about bombing Hiroshima and Nagasaki. I am personally so hopeful and thrilled about the DEI program that only serves to make my experience and the experience of my younger brother, who has many more years after me, and the other students like us, a little bit easier. I'm hurt by those who are telling me they simply don't see my differences and feels like they're holding me by my arms and shaking me and telling me they are not racist."
Next, we have Kelly Davis.
Thanks so much to all the brave students that came here tonight. You guys rock. My name is Kelly Davis, and I came here tonight to voice my support for DEI because I fundamentally believe that we all belong to each other. Now, I would be lying if I said that my own kids weren't maybe like my favorite, but all of your kids are also a little bit mine too. At least, that's how I feel. As a parent in this community, I'm invested in seeing every child receive what they need to succeed, which is the very base definition of equity. In our rapidly evolving social climate, I want our dedicated educators to feel equipped and resourced to respond to the daily needs of our students while continuing to focus on academic success. I want to see our students consider life through more than one lens. I want to see the autistic student find friendship and inclusion among his peers. I want to see the light in the black child's eyes when she finally has a teacher who looks like her. And I even want to see the student who thinks differently than my own to have a safe space to share her beliefs without fear of repercussion. I believe that Terry Roberts Leonard brings a level of awareness and accountability regarding all of these things and more to an already intentional and caring CCS staff. Thank you.
Next, we have Todd Crosby.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Todd Crosby, not the Clay Middle School Todd Crosby, just to get that out there. I'm a parent of three children at Woodbrook, and one will be going to Clay Middle School next year. So DEI is not CRT. Let me repeat, DEI is not CRT, right? DEI is not CRT. I'm really tired of the comparison and the misinformation. This has been politicized with no real data and proof. This is, our children do not deserve this. Local and national pushback has actually brought many of us supportive parents together even more, which I love. The type of statements that were made at the last school board, I was there, and even today, slid a, well, I shouldn't say today, sorry. But it confirms why we need DEI. The students have done wonderful today. I implore all of you to sit down and have courageous conversations. I implore you to befriend someone who does not fit your immediate family descriptors. I implore you to understand why Black History Month is not celebrated event at your elementary school. And I personally send a response and try to get feedback about why it isn't, and it takes weeks to get that feedback. You know, I implore you to understand and experience why me, as a black man, ask what I do for a living because there is a look of concern or question of how I could live, how I could afford to live in the city. We need DEI for teaching inclusivity to all of our children, regardless of race, creed, background, abilities, or other preferences. I'm tired of the bullying because that's what it really is. All of our children must feel safe and welcome and included. Until the actual curriculum is being requested to be changed to include CRT, and that's a whole nother discussion, right? All the screaming, protesting, national gathering for it, all is a mute point and a waste of time. Why are we spending time doing this? So no one's being stealthy about the scenario. This DEI work is great. It's out there to highlight all the critical shares about the underrepresented people in our history. So, you know, I think about the history, right? Have you not looked at the recent Asian hate that's out there? Do you not know the name of Elijah McClain, right? Do you not see what our violent society is turning into? It starts with our youth. Our youth, they are the root of what's going on. And DEI is that foundation to help instill love for all within our society. We're part of each other. We will be here together. I want to learn about everyone, and DEI does that. I want to see, feel, empathize with everyone. DEI does that. I want my children to know that all cops do not hate black people. DEI absolutely does that. I want my soon-to-be sixth grader that's going to middle school to not feel like she has to ask me if there's going to be racist teachers there. That absolutely happened. So I'm short on time. Definitely will need to close this up, but I'm just going to say that DEI is not CRT again. You know, it absolutely is about diversity, equity, and inclusion, which the board clearly laid out very clear for us. I want us to grow together. I want us to love each other and always remind us, remind each other of who we really are. Thank you.
Next, we have Paige Miller.
Paige Miller. We can agree that CRT is not being taught in the classroom. CRT is an ideology, not a curriculum. SEL is the curriculum to bring in this ideology. SEL is a trauma-based curriculum, appropriate as an intervention and for those students that come from a trauma-based home or have experienced trauma. Carmel Clay Schools has adopted this curriculum across the board for every child, regardless of their background. At no time in my 33 years as a classroom teacher in Carmel have we ever adopted and applied a one-size-fits-all curriculum until SEL. This curriculum has brought safe spots to the elementary classroom as well as rooms such as the Rocket Retreat at Smoky Row or the Zen Den at Town Meadow, where students are allowed to go at will in order to work on self-regulation. A further look into SEL shows that parents are in the farthest circle and have not been informed on the tenants being taught to their children. Parents are notified every time their child goes to the nurse. However, parents are not notified when their children leave the classroom, miss instructional time, and are sitting in a blow-up canoe as they work through the issue with an instructional assistant that is no longer out working in classrooms, but sits waiting for a student to come down. Last fall, during a pandemic, when not many students had been to the retreat, a Google Doc went out to teachers asking for ideas on how they could get more students using the retreat. How about, "Teachers, you're doing such a great job, it's not needed." Third through 10th graders were given a survey by a company called Panorama. Many parents were shocked to find out that a survey sent to middle school students asked such inappropriate questions such as, "Should the government continue to fund Planned Parenthood?" "What is your stance on abortion?" "Should transgender athletes be allowed to compete in athletic events?" "What does this have to do with any of our state standards?" What is this data being used for? The CRT ideology opens the door for teachers to bring their personal political feelings into the classroom. At Creekside, Tim Ferriss gave a morning announcement and said, "Teachers, we still have 51 students testing in the multipurpose room. Please do the pledge." The moment of silence in your classroom. Announcements were sent in an email. A teacher's response, "We are not going to do the pledge because what's the point in doing the pledge if it's not true?" The pledge of allowance. This teacher also allows students to stand for the pledge, but they aren't allowed to recite it. "CCS, you need to stay in your lane. It's time to get back to the goal of excellence in education. Your job is to teach reading, writing, math, social studies, and science. You are overreaching into the family lane, and that is creating a big problem. It works best when teachers teach and parents parent. We've always focused on differentiation and giving all students what they need. SEL should be used for those it was intended, not for a one-size-fits-all."
Next, we have Antoine Jackson. And it looks as though we did have some, this is our last speaker, by the way, because we are at our 30 minutes, so please go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
It's Antoine Jackson.
Antoine, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Growing up in a military family put me in a position to move around the country, experience different parts of the United States, and interact with many different races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. Currently, I run a facility with over 500 associates that mirror what I experienced as I was growing up. That experience prepared me for what I do now. Many children will not get that experience and will never venture outside of these individual bubbles that we have in Indiana and other areas. During the last meeting, I heard a lot of opposition to the DEI position, and many of the people who spoke against the role left the building prior to hearing the DEI officer or Dr. Berisford speak about what the role entails. I'm glad you had the opportunity to hear some of that today, and you'll have the opportunity to look at that information on the website. In order for there to be civil discourse, there must be an opportunity to present and analyze facts. Once the facts are presented, there is an opportunity for discussion. When discussions start, there's an opportunity for understanding. Today, I have spoken with people in the front of this building that have been in my home and vice versa, that are on opposite side of this issue, so I know there's an opportunity for discussion. I encourage those that are opposed to this position to not go off of emotion or be afraid of change, but to listen, to understand, and not to respond. The wheels are in motion, so yes, our children, yes, our schools.
Thank you. I have several other people who are wishing to speak. We have hit our 30-minute limit, so please feel free to share your comments via email with the board. I will say, we have been very fortunate. We've received several emails and messages through the link that was provided on the website and through the social media site, and the email that Emily had sent out. We are reading those, and we, I will say, we've received over 100. Most have been in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion. That being said, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. And for that, we have consent. May I get a motion to approve consent? Still moved. May I get a second? Second. Thank you. I will like to share that on consent, we have a number of gifts to the community and to our Carmel community. In addition to payroll, personnel, claims, we also have Dominic and Jose Chase donated $250 at Forestdale Elementary School for the classroom of Christina Coleman Inc. At Mohawk Trails, the Eli Lilly and Company Foundation awarded Mohawk Trails Elementary a matching grant in the amount of $50 for their employee, Elizabeth Melvin. At CHS, the Tech Council Booster Club donated a Bailey cold saw, which is truly a big saw, valued at over $2,300 to the Carmel High School Engineering and Technology. valued at over $2,300 to the Carmel High School Engineering and Technology Education Department. For Carmel Clay Schools, the Big Ideas Learning Company donated $1,000 to the Carmel Clay Schools' Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Department in appreciation for the advisory services of CCS personnel. And the Carmel Education Foundation has awarded two significant awards. One award to the tune of $20,000, a grant to Carmel Clay Schools for their summer school programming, and also $2,500 for family engagement, which will be utilized by Stephanie Whiteside through Student Services. Do we have any questions about consent at this time? Seeing none, all in favor of consent? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda.
This is Ben Berg. If I could interrupt you just briefly.
Please do.
I happen to know that a lot of these students have AP tests.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we may want to take a pause and allow them, if you want to, you know, slip out. I don't want you to be, feel like you're locked in or anybody else in the crowd, but I do know it's a school night.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. I am happy to pause for a few minutes. If you would like to stay, you are welcome to. If you would like to go attend to other activities, please. I would like to say thank you. We typically don't have students coming before the board. You did a marvelous job sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you. Dr. Beresford, are we letting other people into these seats, or are we done? How are we doing things? I, that was a great question, Katie.
You know, I don't even know what the status of, if anybody's out there who wants to come in, I can text, text Mr. Woodward and say, "It looks like we have..."
Well, we will move along.
I'll count chairs and tell them.
Okay, that sounds great. We will just move along with our meeting. First item, first action item we have is the beverage provider agreement. Into that, we turn to Mr. McMichael. Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the beverage agreement? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Katie?
Can you explain a little bit about the healthier generation guidelines and as far as sugary drinks and things, a little bit more for our community?
It's working.
This one works.
Yeah, so these guidelines were actually created in the 90s, and they essentially provide that the only products that we will make available to students would be products that are non-sugar products, and generally, as the name implies, considered within the beverage community to be the more healthy products. Currently, and over the years increasingly, students are selecting primarily water and, and then other flavored waters like vitamin water and so forth. We do provide carbonated soft drinks, but they're diet soft drinks as opposed to the products that have sugar. So, that's essentially the guidelines.
Thank you. Any other questions? Pam?
Yes, will this agreement affect after-school extracurricular activities, like with the Dads Club, because they're selling our...
No, everything that I, the comments that I made are entirely during the school day. So, as they have been for the last 25 years, I think. So, as the board knows, the Dads Club at the high school takes, manages and runs the concessions, and then they give a percentage to the, to the school. And on the weekends and after-school, these are not the guidelines. And so, for example, even during the school year, there are, I think, five machines at the high school that are really in the area of like athletics where kids are, you know, doing strenuous activities and so forth. And so, the products in those machines are, are not covered under these guidelines.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, it's time to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the five-year exclusive agreement with PepsiCo for our beverage contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion? Yes? Oh. And did you second, Katie? Sorry about that. And motion carries. Five zero. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have materials adoption. Into that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So, this evening, I bring to you recommendation for approval of several materials adoption for several of our courses. Some of these are new courses that we just added for the next year program of study at the high school, and some are courses that we had that we were up for adoption. These courses include music theory, linear algebra, which is a new course, the English courses at the high school, the materials for those courses, as well as the literacy courses at our elementary school, and also our applied courses that we use in our FAP programs and life skills programs at the high school as well. And so, I bring to you these materials for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table to approve the materials adoption stated in the attached document? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Well, I would just like to say that I am very excited about these books. In fact, I printed it, so I thought perhaps it would be some of my personal summer reading program because I've been, I'm very intrigued at what our high schoolers are going to be reading. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the materials adoption as stated on the PDF document, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Motion carries. Five zero. Thank you. Next, we turn to Mr. McMichael again for the revision of the 2021-2022 school calendar.
Thank you. The recommendation is to change the second and third day of the current calendar from a student day to a teacher contract day or a teacher work day. And then, the students would start on, on the fourth day. The reason for this recommendation is, is that in previous years, if we had a snow day, for example, and, and closed school, after the first two days, we would then schedule a makeup day. And now, what we're anticipating doing is if we have, if school is closed, we will pivot to a virtual learning day, and the makeup day will not be necessary.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the amended 2021-2022 school calendar? Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Discussion. Katie?
So, to confirm, our staff and teachers are not having to come any earlier. They're coming the same time that they already were. Our students will be coming two days later.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I'll state that two days later would be August the 12th. Any other, yes, Mike?
And, and being old-fashioned, what would happen if there was a catastrophe, electricity, internet out? How would we handle if we had to cancel their school?
Well, students by Indiana law must attend school 180 days. And so, if, I think what you're saying is if something happened that we could not have a virtual learning day, then we would find it necessary to schedule another day, either in-person or virtual.
I might add to that, that as a performance-qualified school district, and also there's some legislation this year that may broaden that scope, that we can go to minutes rather than making up a day. So, we do have a little bit of flexibility there. So, we would have to handle it one of those two ways.
So, that would be like we had done in the past where we add five minutes a day to get up to the minimums? Thank you.
Since we're talking about that, Dr. Beresford, do we not exceed our minutes per day already by a small margin that we would be okay?
Dr. Dudley keeps all the math on that, so I'll defer to her.
Perfect.
Yes, we do exceed our minutes in our secondary schools as well as our elementary schools. And so, if we did have to miss just one day, per se, we would not necessarily need to add minutes to the day. And so, and I don't have the math right in front of me, but we, there are several days that we could miss before we would have to add.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any other questions or comments at this time? My only comment is, how will we share this information with parents if we should approve this?
I assume we would send out a school messenger to communicate it to all the parents.
Like soon?
And it'd also be on our webpage.
Okay. That sounds great. Seeing that there are no other questions or comments at this time, all those in favor of supporting the amended school calendar, removing the first two already scheduled school days for students, where students will start on August the 12th of 2021 for the 2021-2022 calendar school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda, we start with a series of bid awards, and to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael as well.
Thank you. So, the first one is a recommendation to award bids for the project in the Performing Arts Center at Carmel High School, the main office, the auditorium, and additions and renovations to that area. These bids total 16,230,533. As the board is aware, this project will be paid from school building, school corporation bonds, school building corporation bonds, and so, and the bids are well within the estimates. So, we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to support the bid award for Carmel High School Performing Arts, the main office, and the auditorium additions and renovations?
Still moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Pam?
Yes, I'm just checking. The firm that is scheduled to do the masonry here, was that a, one of the firms that we used currently on either one of the new buildings?
No, I don't, no, it's not. We have, I believe this firm is, Wilhelm has done work for us before, but not on the current elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Katie?
I just want to acknowledge that I think it's amazing that we did come under our, around our estimates. I know anyone who's trying to do any sort of even a home project right now is seeing like crazy prices, so kudos to your team and all of the people who bid. Carmel Clay Schools appreciates it.
Roger, I've got a question, and I should know this, but on Friday, several asked because the, the topic of the auditorium renovation came up. When do we anticipate completion of that project?
The entire project or the auditorium specific?
The auditorium, performing arts area.
When do you know if, I don't...
The facilities?
The chart that I sent you of the project chart?
Yeah. I know, and I read it, I just forgot.
Should be listed.
I just thought if somebody knew, I would. Okay. Well, I will look that up. Thank you. Any other questions or comments this evening? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of supporting a bid award for the Carmel High School Performing Arts, main office, auditorium additions and renovations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we have bid awards for the ESC addition and renovation. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This project is, is for the Educational Service Center. It's for a addition and as well as renovation to the existing building. By renovation, it's, it's replacement of finishes, wall coverings, and flooring materials. And the total bid award is $1,907,300, and it is also within our estimates.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the bid for the Carmel, the Educational Service Center addition and renovations as stated?
Still moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Pam?
I just want to say I'm glad this came in under our projected, our, what we thought this project was going to cost. So, that's, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Well, we'll take a vote, then. All those in favor of supporting the Educational Service Center addition and renovations as followed with these bid awards, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we actually have bid rejections. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, unfortunately, this, this, we're recommending rejection of these bids and their bids for some work at, at Murray Stadium, but primarily the Hartman Baseball Complex and improvements. These bids came over our estimates, and so, we're recommending rejection, and, and what we're anticipating doing is, is breaking the bids down to smaller contracts in hopes that we will get more interest because we are finding that the market right now, as was noted earlier, on the big projects with the big contractors, we, we came out very well, like in performing arts, but this project, we did not. So, so we're going to restructure the, the contracts and then rebid it.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to reject the bids for the Murray Stadium and Hartman Baseball Complex improvements?
Still moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise. Discussion. I have a question. We have not, in my experience, had bid rejections before. So, what is the process moving forward? Do we send a rejection letter to everybody that we solicited a response from?
Yes, Skilman would handle that on our behalf, but, and then, as I said, they'll restructure the, the contracts essentially, and then they'll re-advertise and kind of go through that process a second time.
Is there any of these two projects, anything that is more sensitive that needs to be accomplished sooner rather than later, that we'll be bidding on that?
No.
Okay.
We, we have enough time to do the process again.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mike?
I mean, I guess I'd like to echo Leila's comment about, I appreciate that when we don't get bids that are right, that we don't just move forward for the sake of moving forward. I mean, I guess the question I have is if, once the process starts and we put out a job for bids, is that the reason that we need to actually take formal action to say we're not going forward? Or, you know, I guess my question is why we're asked, why we're being asked to do some, to approve not doing something?
Well, because it's really the board that, when you advertise, we're, we're doing that on your behalf, but it's kind of like the school board's advertising ultimately for these bids, and so, when we're, we're not recommending that you award bids, it just kind of closes out the process and so that you, so that we have it as a matter of record that you, you've rejected all of these bids.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That was a good one, Mike. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor... All those in favor of rejecting the bids for the Murray Sacker Stadium and Hartman Baseball Complex improvements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, another bid rejection.
Yeah, this one unfortunately, we're recommending rejection as well. This is at Carmel Middle School. It's, it's essentially is a project to improve the drop off for the carpooling folks. And if you're familiar with all Carmel Middle School, they, there are enough carpoolers that, that they, they snake around through to the back of the building, and, and we've made some, I'll say temporary modifications to direct the traffic and close off the parking lot. But this project came in about double the estimate, and it's over a million dollars. Part of it is, the city is, if we do what we wanted to do, then the city will, wants us to do a couple of other things that we wouldn't have necessarily done. And that, that's just part of it, but, but it's over a million dollars, and so my estimation is, it's, we have to take a different look at this project. It's, it's just not, in my view, worth a million dollars to improve that pickup and drop off. So we're going to do two things. One is we'll, we'll, we'll look at it again and see if there's a way to, you know, kind of get to the end result with less money perhaps, but also waiting on the market to see. There's been a lot of bidding out there, and, and so, and that school will be coming up in a couple of years for, for finishes, replacement, and, and depending on market conditions, we might even wait and include it as a part of a larger project at the school.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to reject the Carmel Middle School site improvements?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion or questions for Mr. McMichael? All right. All those in favor of supporting rejecting the bids for Carmel Middle School site improvements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next, we have several policies, and to that we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Fannenberg. And if you would like, in the essence of time, if you would like to take these in a block possibly, I have three policies that have revisions, and one policy, the recommendation would be to delete the policy.
I would support taking them in a block. How about the board? Yes, we will take these in a block. So I will say, Dr. Dudley, what we have on the table, we have adoption of policy 4340, adoption of revisions to 4460, deleting policy 4464, and adoption of changes to policy 4515. Please go ahead.
Thank you. And so in these policies that we have, they have been reviewed by our policy committee as well as other personnel. For example, in our criminal gang activity schools policy, that was reviewed by our Director of Student Safety, Mr. Woodward, to make some slight revisions in those policies. So the student accidents policy, the graduation requirement policy, as well as the criminal gang activity, all have slight revisions. The early graduation policy, policy 4464, the recommendation is to delete this policy because all pertinent information is included in our policy 4460. And so we would, we are recommending that we delete policy 4464.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table to approve slight revisions to policy 4340, student accidents, 4460, graduation requirements policy, 4515, criminal gang activity in schools and criminal organizational activity, and the deletion of policy 4464, early graduation?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take, yes.
I guess I'd just like to say, these policies were already up for discussion before.
Yes.
So this is not the first time we're seeing these proposals, and
No.
we've asked questions before.
Yes, thank you. And, and that's a really good point. For those members of the audience who may have not been to a meeting before, everything that we have that comes as an action item has been presented at least once before as a discussion item. We do not take action on new material unless there is a dire emergency, and that is maybe twice in my 10 and a half years on the board. So that is our practice, and it is actually written into our bylaws and policies. So, that being said, thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. We're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the slight revisions to policy 4340, 4460, 4515, and the deletion of policy 4464, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, motion carries five zero. Thank you, everybody. And next, actually, we turn to Dr. Dudley. We jumped to discussion, science and engineering materials adoption. Please go ahead, Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I am pleased to bring before the board for discussion materials adoption for our elementary science programs, and the materials that were selected by our committee and our elementary teachers are the Project Lead the Way launch materials. These materials, this is probably one of our longest piloted programs that we've done, our science adoption, we started that, and then we put it on the back burner, and we decided to pilot some programs, and as we did, the Project Lead the Way programs really enhanced their offerings, and also made sure that they covered all of our science standards in elementary schools. And our teachers are so very excited. We had some demonstrations with the board with some of the new science standards in the past, and these are hands-on materials that the students really have the opportunity to work and learning the different science concepts. And we have several Project Lead the Way programs in our middle schools as well as our high school, and so these materials will help build that science and engineering, technology, STEM pieces in our elementary students. And also on this materials adoption, we also have the new course at the high school, Aerospace Engineering, and they are the Project Lead the Way materials for that course in aerospace engineering, which is open to our 11th, our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students in our engineering and technology department at Carmel High School.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We open the floor to discussion. Any questions for Dr. Dudley at this time? Pam?
Yes, could you explain Generation Genius?
So Generation Genius is an online program that, in addition to the Project Lead the Way, it's an online subscription program that we would use with our students in kindergarten through fifth grade to enhance the science standards. And so there's some activities, some lessons in there that bring in more of the standards, and really helps give the students to enhance that. And we have several teachers that have piloted this as well. There was actually two online programs that our teachers piloted, and they decided that this one was the one that better met the standards and was more engaging to our students.
So it's used in conjunction with the classroom projects that they are doing?
Correct.
So it's more individualized?
The, I would say it's, it's not necessarily more individualized, but it enhances the learning to make sure that we are going deeper with the learning for all of our students.
And then the Project Lead the Way, does that have, those are kits that the, that the teachers will use in the classroom with all the materials and things that they need?
That is correct.
Because I know how sometimes it's really hard to gather all those materials.
Well, and one of the things with this adoption that we are also looking at, because you are absolutely correct, to gather all of those materials, to get all of those materials ordered, is sometimes very difficult, because in the past, we've adopted science kits for many years now, and, and you use those science kits. And so what we are proposing, when we purchase these materials, we'll purchase the kits, and then we will purchase the refill kits as a whole, so that the teachers will not have to go to the science closet and find all of the pieces. They'll have the resource kit, and then also our administrative assistants in the front office will be very thankful as well, where they will not have to order all of these individual pieces.
Okay. Thank you. That's good to know.
Any other questions? Katie?
I just have a comment. I just think, looking at some of these things, robotics and automation, organism structure, patterns in the universe, I mean, what a cool time to be a kid. I think it's just so amazing, all the different things that we offer, and every board meeting, when you bring up things like aerospace engineering, and becoming an EMT in high school, I mean, all of these things, I just think it's so wonderful that we have so many options for our kids. So as always, thank you for leading the charge.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, well, Dr. Dudley, we look forward to bringing these back at the June 28th meeting. And moving right along, we have Dr. Dudley again. Professional development programs.
Thank you. And so this evening, I do have a report on our summer professional development offerings for our staff. And many times, people ask, you know, what do educators do in the summer? Oh, you have the whole summer off, what do you do? And so in addition to taking well-deserved vacations, our dedicated teachers and administrators go above and beyond to improve their craft by participating in our summer professional development. And each summer in Carmel Clay Schools, we offer an extensive list of professional development, learning opportunities for our teachers, our administrators, and our staff. And so some of these topics that we are offering, we're offering over 90-plus sessions for our teachers to participate in, and some of these topics include literacy, so this would be training on some of our new literacy materials that we have, as well as instructional practices that we use in our readers workshop, our writers workshop, evidence-based instructional practices for our students at all grade levels. And the same with math. We did a board workshop not too long ago with math workshop, and we're offering professional development in the area of those instructional practices to really meet the needs of our students, our science and STEM. This will also continue with some of our new materials, as well as enhancing some of the materials that we currently have in those instructional strategies, to make sure that our teachers feel confident in their instruction in that, those areas. We also have continuation technology and integration, that is a very popular one with our teachers, as they continue to enhance using technology. And our hope next year is to come back in person, however, that doesn't mean that we'd stop using the technology. We'll continue to use our technology to really amplify the learning that is happening in the classroom, and to use what we've learned this past year to continue to build upon that. So that is a, a very popular topic with our staff. Other areas with our social emotional learning, and our diversity, equity, and inclusion, our staff, these are very popular areas that our staff will engage in that learning this summer. And then CPI, which is our de-escalation with our students, where we really, teachers learn how to de-escalate a situation, how to prevent issues before they happen, and really helps to intervene with helping students with those appropriate behaviors. For some of our students that may have self-regulation issues, and we want to prevent it before it happens, and so that's training that we offer as well. And then also training on grading and reporting, and we're really looking at enhancing the use of our standards-based report cards at our elementary school. Right now, we have standards-based report cards offered in all of K through five, and next year we'll be moving for, our, we have a few, a few schools that still did the grading, the traditional ABC grading in fourth and fifth grade, and they will all move to that standards-based report card. So we'll offer training in that, as well as our special ed compliance and looking at our new teachers. So this training is for our current teachers, and then also, we also do introductory training for all of our new staff that we hire, for all of the programs that we have. And the format of the training is, we have several different formats that are happening. We have workshops, and so these workshops are offered in person, they're offered virtually, and they're also offered blended. So it's a combination of in-person as well as blended learning. And these sessions are also offered between, some sessions are just one-hour sessions, all the way up to six-hour sessions, and we also offer the sessions in, the in-person sessions and the virtual sessions in the morning, in the afternoon, and also in the evening. We have several of our staff members that really love the evening offerings, because then they don't have to worry about childcare, they can come, where their spouse can watch their young children at home, and so those are very popular option for our staff, and we get much more turnout there. We also are offering virtual courses, and several of these courses are both guided and as well as self-paced. For example, we have a technology course that is a self-paced course on integrating that technology into the classroom, and this is a Canvas course that Amanda Hoagland, one of our supervisors of learning, has developed this course. And then the teachers, they sign up for the course, and it's self-paced, and then where she provides feedback, they interact with each other through the, using the technology with the application of how they would use these different instructional strategies in their classroom. We also have some book studies that we're offering, and again, these book studies are a combination of blended book studies as well as self-paced book studies. And a new piece that we're offering this summer that we're very excited about is a virtual conference. And this virtual conference is in conjunction with CIESC, our service center that we work with, and the virtual conference is held on June 29th and June 30th. Through our membership with CIESC, we were able to sign up all of our teachers, all of our administrators, for this conference, and it, it has a variety of different keynotes, speakers, as well as breakout sessions. And if our teachers are not able to participate in the live virtual conference on June 29th and 30th, then they will have the opportunity to have all of the content for the conference for the next 12 months. So that learning will be able to continue to go on, and we're very excited about having this opportunity, because we have several national speakers that are keynotes at this conference. And so as I said, we have such dedicated teachers and administrators, and this slide actually was updated from the slide that you received in your board packet as of this afternoon at 5:30. And we actually have 661 educators signed up for sessions, that's individual educators, and they're signed up for 1,170 sessions. So several of them are doing more than one conference, and none of this includes the ones that signed up for the CIESC. This is all just the ones in-house. And our facilitators for our summer of learning includes 25 Carmel Clay Schools educators. So these are our, many of our people in the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department, as well as our Terry Roberts Leonard and our DEI, Stephanie Whiteside, and then also our instructional coaches, teachers throughout the district that provide this training, and they're, they act as the facilitators. And then we do have four non-CCS educators that will also facilitate some sessions for us. So we're so excited for our summer of professional learning, and just, we're just very thankful for our educators that are so dedicated, that they want to continue to learn, and, and they exemplify that growth mindset, and they continue, no matter how great they are, they want to continue to get better, and we're excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions from board? Mike?
This may be a little, a little off topic. Are we planning on doing C4 this year?
No.
Okay. That was distinct, thank you.
Yes. No, we just had so much going on that that was not a possibility right now.
I just want to say, this is a very good example of DEI right here, and how you're being diverse and inclusive and equity in how you're presenting these courses to all the teachers and giving them many opportunities to, to attend at various times. So I, I like that.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have other reports, board reports. I don't believe any board members have any reports they wish to share this evening, so let's turn to Dr. Beresford. I hear he has a robust report for us tonight.
Well, robust is probably a good word for it. You may say I'm a little windy, but, but first off, I wanted to say, that was a great report Dr. Dudley just shared. Over 60% of our teachers are attending professional learning on their own time, because they want to get better. And, and, and also it's being taught by our teachers. So the collaboration in Carmel Clay Schools is fantastic, and it's, and I've told you before, a lot of research around collaboration, that, that collaborative environments achieve higher, and, and also you don't have a whole lot of people wanting to leave the organization because it's a, it's a good place to be, so real happy about that. And what a great meeting tonight with our Teacher of the Year and meeting tonight with our Teacher of the Year and celebrating the basketball team. I, those guys, you know, about every game was close. And it was, and I, at one point, I thought I should just purchase an AED and keep it on me, because I was going to have a heart attack at the end of some of those ballgames. And what a great group of kids. You could tell in the video how humble they were and how, how much they liked to play basketball together and just still kids. So really good night. But I do have a pretty good report here. First thing I want to do is to just get information out to the community that we're going to have a Carmel Elementary School open house, and we want to invite all the former students and staff to come and reunite and reminisce just one last time before we say goodbye and move over to the new Carmel Elementary building. So this will be the last chance before the demolition, demolition, to take a walk through Carmel L. and, and really enjoy some time there. So that'll be Thursday, May the twentieth, from five PM to seven PM. And so it's kind of just a little open house and a time for folks to take one more trip down through that building. In the world of sports, our Carmel High School boys track team are your county champions, and our girls' track team were the runners-up in the county on two separate nights last week. And we've got a lot of really talented athletes on those teams, and they're going to make some noise at the state meet, and they're gearing up for the sectionals coming up. Along the same lines, our Carmel girls tennis team has defeated five top-ten teams in the last two weeks. They won the MIC. And then last Friday, they knocked off number one, I think it was South, South Bend, St. Joseph. And so in, in defeating the five-ranked teams, they have a combined score of nineteen to six. So I think the girls' tennis team is peaking at the right time. Boys' baseball and girls' softball are both competing at high level. There's, it just like, seems like they're all gearing up because it's almost tournament time. And, and our Carmel High School boys lacrosse team knocked off number-two Cathedral this weekend as well. So that's pretty cool. And then along the same lines, in the world of sports, our alumni are making some noise. Several Carmel High School track runners are now Big Ten champions, running for IU and some universities around. And also, some of our girls' swimmers have qualified, met the Olympic trials standard, and will be competing for the trials. So just a lot of alumni doing a real nice job out there. And it seems like on the post, they always put a little Carmel on there someplace just to, just to remind us that where they went to high school. That's kind of nice. Moving from that to some student activities, WHJE Radio placed second in the state, and with a record-setting seventeen students were recognized. And so a real good year for the, for the radio station. Our Carmel High School TV station also received some recognition. That's at the Indiana Association of School Broadcasting, and they've had recognition in four categories. So good, good times for those guys. Our math counts. So last weekend, four Indiana middle schoolers represented Indiana in the National Math Counts competition. So this is the national competition. Three of the four were from Carmel Clay Schools, from Carmel Middle School and Clay Middle Schools. So out of four from Indiana, the national, three of them were from right here in our, our community. Academic Super Bowl, Carmel High School brought home state championship for Class One Academic Super Bowl State Champs for Social Studies. So there you go, fresher Williams. Just let you know, we got, we got, we got some good kids coming your way. Cheftacular, I know some of you got to attend Cheftacular, and I had the opportunity to join three chefs to judge this event last Monday at, what is it, Center Green, they're at, what is it, the Carter Green? Carter Green. And what this is, is they join Carmel High School culinary arts students, and they, they work with a chef, a practice, you know, a real chef from, from different restaurants around the area. And then they pair together, and then they create a dish. And then they hand that, that dish is their competition dish. And, and they sold out, all two-hundred-plus tickets were sold out. And, and they created these delicious dishes. And, and then the top three dishes receive a scholarship from a culinary arts school of ten thousand, six thousand, and four thousand dollars for, for second and third. It's also a fundraiser for the culinary arts and also for the food bank here in Hamilton County Food Bank. So it was just a great, great event, and, and it was really good. I was the only guy that didn't really fit in, because I was not a chef, but I'm good at eating. So that was, that worked out. Really exciting time. The Carmel High School marching band was surprised with the announcement that they're headed to New York City for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade next year. And it was pretty cool. I got to go check that out, too. And it was done on Zoom in the auditorium on the big screen. They even had like confetti that they, they shot off and really had a good celebration. It was a big surprise event. And then also, of course, I was, the students immediately got up and started cleaning up the auditorium. Our kids are so responsible. It just makes me smile all the time. I also had the opportunity to attend Mama Mia, the musical, and Carmel, the Carmel Choir's concert on Friday. And I tell you, me and Mrs. B., just, I know it's a cheap date, but man, is it good entertainment. And they were just amazing. The Spring Concert was the only in-person concert for the choir kids. They've been performing for a year and a quarter just on video. And you could just tell they were feeding off the audience, and the audience was going bananas, because we were having a great time, too. And everybody walked away from that smile. It's like, oh, my gosh, we're getting back to a little bit of normal. And so, you know, their performances, and Mama Mia was again outstanding with the kids. At one point in the musical, there's a scene where this, that one of the female actors says, "I just love his smile." And, and the kid was sitting there, and he pulled his mask out like this, and went, and the crowd went wild. So it was really, really special. So bravo to the students, the directors, the stage crew, the tech teams, and of course, the talented actors on the stage. The Carmel Dance, you can tell this report is like all bell ringers. Like every, everything that's on here could be the bell ringer. But the Carmel Dance Marathon, those kids had to find a way, because they could not do the dance marathon the way they'd done it in the past. And, and what they did was, they found it in a big way. And they danced around the stadium, the Carmel Stadium, and they raised more than four-hundred thousand dollars for the Riley's Children's Hospital, four-hundred thousand dollars. And so kudos to the students. Mrs. Wolf, I know, is a big part of that, and, and all the other faculty that helped with that. It's just, you know, to do that for those kids is something. So I did break it down to two bell ringers. I couldn't go with just one. I had to go with two. And the first one is Senior Zoe Edwards. And this is really, really big. She was named part of the fifty-seventh class of the U.S. Presidential Scholars. Now Zoe is one of only one-hundred-and-sixty-one students from across the country to earn this distinction, and one of only two in the state of Indiana. I believe more than six thousand candidates were chosen in the pool for this. And she was chosen because of her, of course, her, her academics, but also through her service work and volunteering. And she's part of the Carmel Mayor's Youth Council, Science for Caring, Teen Library Council, Model UN, and she's on the state championship mock trial team, which I think is competing nationals as well. But just congratulations. She's a truly remarkable student, and she's dedicated to Carmel High School, but also to our community. And so just congratulations to Zoe. And, you know, just amazing. That brings me to the final bell ringer. And, and that is, I wanted to end my report with just a huge shout-out and a lot of love for the class of 2021. I want to encourage our entire community to celebrate this amazing group of students. This class has been a record-setting group. They've set records academically, athletically, career technical training, community service, performing arts, really in all aspects of high school life. These guys have set standards and, and just been awesome. Now, they did all this, I don't really need to remind you, but during a global pandemic. And so this global pandemic, it took the last five quarters of their high school careers and all of their senior year, they experienced so much, so much, so many obstacles. Really, resiliency was the first word that came to mind to me for this group. And they experienced school in a whole different way, and they were able to creatively find a way to stick together and to achieve at a really high level. They're in this environment that was full of twists and turns and roadblocks. And, and they found a way. They just found a way. And I know it's, it's been difficult. I know it's been a struggle. But just congratulations to those kids, because in, in seven school days, they're going to cross the finish line. And, and I want them to know how very, very proud we are of the class of two thousand twenty-one. So, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Beresford at this time? Well, key jokes. Announcements, Dr. Beresford said, seven academic days left. So May twenty-sixth is our last day of school for our students. May twenty-seventh, graduation at the Pepsi Coliseum. Then we have a couple of board meetings, one very short one on the fourteenth. And then on the twenty-eighth, we have our regular session. Being that there are only seven academic days left, on behalf of the board, we want to wish everyone a very, very safe and enjoyable summer break. We look forward to seeing many of you later this summer, because we're going to have a couple ribbon-cutting ceremonies in open houses for our two new elementary schools, Clay Center Elementary and Carmel Elementary. And those dates will be shared as soon as we have those confirmed, and details will be shared via social media and on our website. And please keep in mind, we just changed the calendar. And so the first day of school for our students is going to be August the twelfth. With that, may I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.